Hi, Brenda. We have a former president today, and this meeting has been recorded. And members of the public may access the meeting through the Central Texas College District website. And I'm telling our agenda is to consider approval of minutes of regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held in October the 25th, 2022. A copy of that has been provided in your read ahead package. Aiden is seconding to approve the minutes as published in discussion on that motion. Seeing none, I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. I'm thrilled to share my update and an opportunity for the members of the public to suggest additional topics for discussion or to address topics of interest. For the presentation limited to three minutes. Is there anyone present like to address the board? Seeing none. Trustee Lamonge is not here today. We informed a little while ago that he had fell this morning and broke his arm. So if you get a chance to send him a thank you note for all the service he's done and a get well card, we, I'm sure he'd appreciate it. I remember four is the chancellor's report.
Yes, sir. Couple of things. First, don't forget commencement exercise December the ninth, six thirty at the Clean Civic and Conference Center. So be sure to be there and everybody on time. And also a reminder that on December sixteenth is our service award ceremony. So, Board Trustees, we'd like you to be there and present that. Pretty significant kinds of awards that day. So, all right. Dr. Garrett, probably, right? Best online community college?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Hello. So I'm just letting you know that TexasOnlineColleges.com has ranked Central Texas College as the best online community college in Texas. So it's really good. Texas Online Colleges, they use a combination of information data from the federal government, the Texas State Government, and AcademicInfluence.com. And so we were ranked number one for best online community colleges in Texas.
Good job. That doesn't come easy, by the way. In case you don't know that. Thank you so much, Michelle. And all the faculty. Deans, if you would, pass that on to them. Our thanks. Texas Transfer Framework Field of Study. Is this Tammy? Okay, Dr. Dr. Eddie's sick.
She is.
Kind of got us messed up here.
But we'll get back on track here we go. Good afternoon, Chairman Weaver, distinguished board members, Chancellor Yanopoulos, and my fellow attendees. In March of 2020, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board adopted new rules to substantially improve student transferability, particularly for students currently attending Texas community colleges who plan to transfer to public four-year universities. The rules establish both a new framework and a new governance committee, the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee, to oversee the development of clear pathways or fields of study to maximize our students' ability to transfer community college coursework to their selected majors at universities. In practice, the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee convenes discipline-specific subcommittees of faculty experts to develop lower-division curricula transfer recommendations. Nominations are sought and appointments are announced. To date, four CTC faculty have earned appointments. Dr. Kara Ariaga in sociology, Dr. Tracy Cook in political science, Ms. Bertha Kondrak in social work, and most recently, Dr. Andrea Foskett in biology. Today, it is my honor to announce the appointment of a fifth CTC faculty expert, kinesiology field of study, Coach Marilyn Mapes. Coach Mapes currently serves as the Chair of our kinesiology department. Her appointment to the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee's discipline-specific subcommittee on kinesiology and exercise science carries a three-year term expiring in August of 2025. Impressively, this is Coach Mapes's second coordinating board appointment, having served previously in 2018. I present to you Coach Mapes.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. He pretty much said the first part of my speech as far as what all this was about. So basically, what happened was we adjourned in a meeting that we had for the field of study. And at the beginning of our discussion, it was basically decided that because of the lower academic, the academic course guide manual, which dictates what courses that we're supposed to teach to move into the four-year degree are, have become kind of irrelevant in our field in kinesiology. I believe it was said that the last time that was updated for us was 1979. So you can imagine that some of those courses are no longer relevant to some of the tracks that are now being created, especially in the scientific areas. Okay, so some of the tracks, besides, when I first started teaching here, coaching here, we had education and science. Okay. At that point, science and coaching was kind of up here, I mean, teaching and coaching was up here. And scientific, like, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and those types of things were a little lower. Well, things have shifted, and there's a lot more students who are interested in those fields now. As a result of that, the academic course guide manual has kind of become irrelevant in some of the courses that it's wanting us to take. So the advisory committee that I was chosen to be a part of put it on pause and are creating a work group to revise and recreate some of the courses that they hope to go into that ACGM that'll be more relevant to successful transfer of students at the lower, at the lower division. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We're waiting to see what that course group comes up with, what data they look at to see what's going to be relevant for those programs. As, you know, the four-year schools have a lot of different tracks, and all those tracks require different courses for those students to take to be successful in those areas. So we're kind of on hold to see how we're going to move forward on that. So that, I actually got an email yesterday, basically stating that. So we're just waiting now to see who's going to be in the work groups and how we're going to move forward to figure out what courses need to be offered to be, hopefully, to be included in the ACGM so that we can provide the assistance or the support that the four-year schools need for their programs.
Coach, will some, will some of the universities be a part of your committees?
Yes, there were thirty-two instructors, professors there, half and half. Half for four-year, half for two-year. They do it that way, so there's not, so it's more even as far as what we want to teach or what we're able to provide for them and what they require. Because a lot of the four-year schools have very specialized programs, and they probably would prefer if students just started in their programs. But that's not realistic, you know?
Exactly.
So anyway, yes, it's half and half. So hopefully, that's, as, as the lower division, we hope that we can work with them and come up with courses that we can, that we're qualified to teach, you know, just as they are, that will help move kids in that direction. So that's what we're hoping for.
One of the neat things about it is we have fifty community colleges, and you're one of the fifteen that is serving on that, in that capacity.
Cool. Thank you. Is there any other questions?
These are, these are not easy. We've got, we've got somebody, it seems like we've got someone, a representative of each of our areas for the core elements and core curriculum, as well as what you're doing. That's huge, folks, if you don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Okay. Ms. Sam Ripa.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to share. Chancellor Yanopoulos has asked that I come to share good news. Our massage therapy program went to the Commission on Massage Therapy Association Board in October, and they voted to grant us accreditation without any recommendations, without any violations, citations, or anything that we got to work on. We came through clean as ever. So that was super exciting. It was a lot of work. This was not an easy feat in that we were the first community college to have massage therapy accreditation. And so typically, when you have a program, a medical program, you can look at examples, you can look at what other colleges have put together. Sometimes they share things with you, documents with you, statistics with you on how to present things, and we had none of that. This was, we were starting, and we are the first ones, and we now are the example. And so that's, that's been fantastic for us in health sciences. And so with that, in October, we also completed the massage therapy labs in our building with the assistance of our facilities and construction teammates and Mr. Liberty and his staff. We were able to complete the labs in the Health and Science Center. So we're hoping to have an open lab where we can have all of you come and see that beautiful area that was constructed for them to learn in. So.
Tammy, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, team, for all they've done. You know, massage therapy, you think you pay somebody twenty-five dollars and go get a massage. That's, that's not really what we're teaching down here. If you go to her labs, you'll see jars with specimens in it. So it's a lot of science, a lot of medical science that goes into that. So if you get a chance, go see it.
It is, and they're real.
I've never had one of those twenty-five dollar massages. I don't think I want to participate in those. The ones I had were like a hundred and fifty dollars. So, yeah, I don't want to know where he spent.
So there are four other institutions, but they are either private service practice, or they are one upper-level university. But we are the only community college in Texas with massage therapy accreditation. So.
But just know that you won't be the last.
I know. I know. We've already been receiving phone calls from other two-year institutions asking to look at some of our stuff, which I'm not open to that just yet. So. So anyways, thank you.
I'll not ask any more questions.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. That was everything.
Dr. Reese, do you have, Dr. Reese, are you presenting?
It's pictures of the month.
Oh, you're doing the pictures. That's right.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Valerie, Valerie's next.
Good afternoon. I am so excited to present to you our information regarding lighting of the Bell Tower. The project started last year, shortly after I arrived at CTC, and having the Santa hat on the Central Texas logo was just very exciting. And we put our heads together to start creating everything as far as the displays that will be featured on December thirteenth here on campus. So I started working with Mr. Duggar and with Mr. Harmson and their staff, and they have just been phenomenal on this entire project throughout the year. This is where the draft started. They drew out all of the different displays that we would like to see featured in the stroll, and they started building. So this is our Eagle Stroll entrance, and it's sponsored by HEB. This is Armie the Elf, so he's our significant person as far as our featured character. And Armie is going to be traveling throughout the campus so that we can get people involved online with hashtags and posting on social media and things like that. And we'll be also offering a scholarship through the foundation for some of our winners. And this was sponsored by All-American Chevrolet. This is our flamingo on a ski, and he's super cute. As far as, we have a palm tree that is also enhances the display. And this is sponsored by Caldwell Banker Aspect Realtors, the Redbird Group. This is our gingerbread man. He's adorable as well, and he's sponsored by Integrity Rehab. This is our Christmas boots with gifts. It's sponsored by Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas. Santa's workshop is sponsored by Central Texas College. The swans that are going to be featured in the duck pond are sponsored by the Cochran family. The eagle on the ornament, this is absolutely gorgeous. So if you get a chance to walk through the displays, they're going to start being featured on December the first through January second, but the actual lighting celebration will take place December thirteenth. But make sure that you check this one out. It's sponsored by the Clean Fort Hood Regional Airport. The President Bow is sponsored by HI TO. And the lighting arch that's going to be featured on the backside of the Hobby Memorial Library is sponsored by Central Texas College as well. The snowman sponsored by Oil States. Our toy soldier is sponsored by the Clean Fort Hood Regional Airport as well. And our stack presence is sponsored by Putters and Gutters. We have three sets of luminary trees that will be featured. We have different sets that will be throughout campus, and they're sponsored by Jim and Nancy Yanopoulos, Sid West with First Community Mortgage, and Dr. Jim Anderson. Our luminaries that will outline the actual tower space are sponsored by Dr. Michelle J. and Antonio Carter, Brigadier General Retired Rex Weaver, Centex Technologies, and Seton Hospital. Our refreshment stations are sponsored by Susan and Davis Fergus and Carlson Law Firm. We also have a donation from Starbucks Coffees that's going to do the hot cocoa for us, and then Cookie Crumble is going to sponsor all of the cookies. We do have a VIP reception that's going to be held in the planetarium following the lighting event. And we have a Santa station who is sponsored by Ashley Furniture. Our structures will be available December first through January second. And the actual ceremony will take place at six PM here at the Bell Tower. We will have a candlelight concert that'll be held at the Frank and Mayborn Science Theater, featuring Trevor Holt, and the tickets are fifty dollars, which includes a VIP package. That package has a souvenir mug, a souvenir ornament, a tote bag, and then the tickets to the VIP reception. And we'll have the event mugs and ornaments also there that evening if someone wants to purchase those separately. And that's just information regarding the event. And we were able to be very successful with the structures as far as all of our sponsors. We were able to raise about twenty thousand dollars off of the structures. You guys have any questions regarding the event?
This didn't start yesterday. This started a year ago. And I know in the summer, when some of Mr. Duggar's folks were out there working, building these, these, I guess, displays, what you call, out of steel, it's hot, right? It was ninety-seven degrees, a hundred degrees outside. And they would, Valerie, they would go get popsicles and take them to them.
Yeah, we'd have popsicle parties. It was fun.
Those guys loved it.
Yeah. So everybody, it's kind, it's been a huge project with all of the staff here at CTC, and it's been pretty incredible, working with everybody and just the excitement. So I'm real excited about just the event itself on Tuesday the thirteenth.
She's got herself and one other person, and then she's got the board to help. So.
Yes.
And then popsicles to enlist.
Yes, for all of them. And everything was made out of recyclable materials. So as far as the cost for the displays themselves, they are just very fantastic individuals and very creative.
So at six-thirty, we're going to push the plunger down and light the campus and the trees and start the walk and end up with the planetarium.
And we'll have the CTC choir here. The band will be here. Santa will be available. We're also working with the library. We have a Santa station, so kids can drop off their letters to Santa, and the library is responding to them with a bookmark.
So we need all seven of you elves to come.
Come, yes. It's going to be a good time. We're going to have a great time.
Ms. Payson is.
Yes, correct.
Ms. Payson is very gracious to thank many other people involved, but your fingerprints are over all this. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, pictures of the month. Here we go. This is the first on the haunted house. Maricely Vargas.
Thank you. Now Maricely Santiago, but that's okay. Thank you. You're not the only one. I still have people looking for me in the, in the directory, like. And it's like, where did you go? I'm here. I'm here. I'm not leaving. My name is Maricely Santiago. I'm the Director of Student Life and Activities. And what you're seeing, these pictures, are from the haunted house that occurred the last Friday and Saturday of October. We actually had the opportunity of having clubs and organizations put together the haunted house and the fall festival. It was a really great opportunity for the clubs to finally, after the pandemic, come together and really put something together. As part of the celebration, we also had the hayride done by the Ag Club. And we had the trunk or treat, which actually was put, came together with the faculty, and different academic departments came and did the trunk or treat on Friday. Altogether, it was a great opportunity. A lot of the individuals, because it was the first Halloween event after so three years, I think, it really took a lot of effort, not just from me and the clubs, but from a lot of other individuals. And I really want to thank all of them, including all three DCs, for helping put this together. We really, at the very last minute, we're trying to make something happen just to get the ball rolling. And I was very, you know, pleased with the results. We actually ended up, let me see if I can. And this is for the clubs and organizations, they get the funds, except for a percentage that we did give to the foundation. We had the, we gave the, total, we had eight thousand, two hundred, sixty-three dollars and seventy cents. Tickets that were sold for the carnival side were four thousand, one hundred, eighty, eighteen dollars and fifty cents. And the haunted house made four thousand, one hundred, forty-five dollars and twenty cents. And then out of that, four hundred, fourteen was sent to the foundation. And so everything else went to the clubs and organizations to kind of get them started. We really, you know, one of my main goals is to actually start developing that interaction between the students and really make sure that they have a fun time, they feel like they're part of this community college, focus on community. So this was a really great start. We were very pleased with the results, especially after so long.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Everybody, we started this, Maricely, when did we start the haunted house?
Oh, well, here's the thing. I don't know. This has been forever and a day, because this is, this predates me, and everybody just tells me that it's been like thirty years or more. I really have no idea, but it's definitely been something that has happened annually minus the pandemic for a really, really long time.
You were, you were working for us in San Diego and all this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I was.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank everybody that was involved and helped.
I will do that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, we got, who do we got?
The last Saturday of October, four student speech and debate team members, under the leadership of Professor Terry Hunt, our new speech and debate team coach, participated in their first seasonal competition, the Battle of the Alamo. Competing against schools both large and small, to include UT Austin, Rice University, Texas State, and TCU, the team scored a solid showing. Most impressively, early college high school junior Isaiah Luciano, pictured leftmost in the black slacks, excelled in the impromptu speaking category, qualifying for the National Forensic Association National Championships to be held in spring 2023.
That's impressive.
On the fourth of November, our seven cow, one bull CTC cattle herd grew by one as cow number three sixteen gave birth to a baby bull calf, signaling the start of the 2023 calf crop. Given the goal of our calf-cow operation is one calf per cow per year, keep your eyes on the herd, Professor Keaton Eriig, our agriculture program coordinator, anticipates six more births in the near future.
There's proof, Bob. There really are some cattle out there.
I saw them yesterday. They are good-looking cattle.
You know you're in Texas with the highlights cattle.
We won't get into that now. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Selinda Hallbauer, and I'm delighted to come and tell you a little bit about our music program today. You'll see here that we had a guest artist performance recently. We do this every semester, invite guests from all over the place to come to the CTC campus. And we perform in Anderson, over here in the banquet hall, in a, in a type of a chamber music concert, intimate area for people. Most of the time, we reach outside our area for guests, but this time, we went to Mary Harden Baylor, because they have some outstanding performance people there. And Michelle Schuman was the collaborative pianist. Michelle is from the Austin area, actually lives in Temple now, but has Austin Chamber Music Society there and works really, really well. And is an outstanding performer. And with her was Matthew Kudler. Now, a euphonium is an instrument that you don't hear a lot about, except they're usually going bump, 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 bump in the back of the band. But this euphonium player was outstanding. Those in the room that were there can tell you that he played all different styles of music, and he could make that euphonium sing. So it was, it was a delight. It's wonderful to be able to have people from the area to come on our campus. But it's most important for our students to be able to interact with these artists and talk to them afterwards at the reception and realize that their goals may be attainable soon. So we're excited to have that, and we'll expect another one in the spring.
Thank you, Selinda. If you haven't attended one of these there, as she said, next door in the, in the banquet hall, we had probably forty, forty-plus attendees at that. I didn't see any board members there, but that's okay. We'll catch you next time, right?
Sometimes they are there.
We'll get them there next time. And, but it is worth it, and they last anywhere from thirty, I've seen them thirty minutes to an hour. So it just kind of depends. So it's not a, it's not a long drawn-out process, but it's well worth it. You paid big money to see this in Austin.
True, and our, our fee is five dollars, and it goes to the college music scholarship fund. And next.
Next.
So then we also have midday music programs in the gazebo. When I first came to Central Texas College in a long time ago, nineteen ninety-five, Dr. Anderson asked me if I could perform something in that gazebo out there. And I said, yes, sir, we can, and we have. And we love to be out in the gazebo in the hot and the cold. But most of all, we love featuring these students. So what you see here on the left is our choir. And I want you to notice in these pictures the diversity of our students, both in age and, and ethnicity and levels of music playing. And that's what we, we're very proud of their diverse backgrounds. They come from all levels of music training. Their, the program excels in bringing them from whatever level they enter and attaining a higher level. And we also strive to help them achieve superior quality in whatever style of music. And that's somewhat different than a lot of different colleges around. So if someone wants to be a rock star, they can start out here and do that. If they want to be a country star, they can do that. If they want to be a classical musician, we're training them that way. Dr. David Thomas is our choir director. And I, I don't know whether there's any frogs in the room, but if you are one and you want to learn to sing, Dr. Thomas can take anybody, I've seen it, and make them into a superior performer. It's amazing what two or three semesters with him can do. So he works with the choir, and in this particular performance, they did Away in a Manger. And then they sang this lovely tune that they're going to sing at graduation, so you will get to hear it. It's called "Oh, Love" by Elaine Hagenberg, and it will bring tears to your eyes. It is, it is really something. And then they did something unique. It was Turkish March by Mozart, but it's only instruments in the voice. So there were no words to this Mozart Turkish March. It was how they're, they were the instruments, and that's an interesting piece to hear as well. You will see, this is Kenny over here on the right. Kenny Maresh came to us from New Mexico, and he is singing a popular tune called "Out of Love" by Alicia Cara. So that's a different style of music. Then you will see Salvatore here, Rizzo, who is playing Allegro uh, for the tuba by Gregorio. And he is from Central Texas Christian School and is a culinary arts major. David Sweetwood here on the left is playing Concerto for Trumpet by Hamel, a Baroque composer. And he's from Copper's Cove High School and is a music major with us. And then you see in the center, our band that's directed by Michelle Palmer, who is one of our adjunct professors. And the band played this funny tune called Flamingos by Putman, and then The Thunder by John Philip Sousa. So you see, we, we tried to pull in all different styles. And these students are so excited about the lighting ceremony that they're staying after school is closed, after graduation, so that they can be a part of that. So please come out and hear them that night. Tomorrow, we have another midday music at lunchtime and we'll be there at twelve thirty to one fifteen. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Celinda. If, if, please thank all of them for their efforts and the things that they're doing. Now that we have a new marketing director, maybe we get some more marketing publicity out on these things and get some more attendance.
That's right. That's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next photograph. Ah, broken that. Dr. Reese.
Good afternoon. It is an honor to be here and an honor to be a part of the Pictures of the Month. Um, so today I bring to you pictures from our Meet the Broker event for our real estate students. It was held on November eighth in the Starlight Conference Center. And it really was a true collaboration among departments um, across campus here at CTC. So after five years of a break in the action from a Meet the Broker event, our adjuncts brought the idea back to us to bring forward. Career Services actually brought it to life. Um, institutional effectiveness pulled the data that we needed in order to see who all of our prior students were over the last several years. And then Student Services contacted all of them for us. So it was a true collaboration. Um, couldn't have been done without, without everyone. So um, at the event, we actually had seven brokerages that came and spoke. Some of them even brought um, two of their agents with them. And one of them even brought three. Now, we have, um, as you all know, we have moved the real estate program online, but this was just for our local area Texas students to come. We had seventeen attend and they stayed and stayed and stayed. It wasn't just because of the amazing meatballs. It really was because of the, and they were good. I tried them first. Um, it really was because of the interaction they had with each of the brokers. And they had great um, communication going, conversations about their future, basically shopping different brokerages that they could go to. And um, getting a little bit of that, the other side, rather than just from their faculty members who are also brokers. Um, but to hear more um, from a variety of people um, in our local area where they might be able to become self-employed one day in the near future. So after the event, we received um, overwhelming support from each of the brokers. They even had some ideas for us to move forward. And we definitely want to try to do something for our online students as well. Just to give you an idea, we moved the program online this fall and our enrollments have tripled in the program. So um, we are extremely excited about that, um, going from fifty-three enrollments to a hundred and thirty-one students um, in a one-year time from fall to fall. So thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you. And please thank all of those that attended. I was there, but I left early. I didn't know they were meatballs or out of state.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, graphics. Come on, Bobby.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Bobby Waddle. I'm the instructor for the graphics and printing department. Um, as you can see here, our students were, or had the opportunity to put our campus police vehicle decals on their brand new vehicle that they received. Uh, Chief Barrigan approached us last year and asked, hey, you know, how can we get the students involved with our police community? How can we save some money? You know, what can your students do? And we kind of looked at it. They've never applied decals before, but we had the equipment. We have the, we had the talent. We had the skills to do it. So I polled the audience, you know, our team came together and the students were excited to jump on that opportunity uh, last year. And then this year, it's a bigger car. Uh, and they were excited to try again and everything turned out great. We had at least uh, five to six students help us. They started with the printing. They printed it on our wide format machine. They cut it all down, laminated it, got it ready to apply. Um, our facilities team let us borrow a bay uh, to apply all the decals, so no dust or wind could get anything under those stickers. And then they applied all the decals precisely. They measured. Um, one team was on one side and the other team was on the other side. And somehow they got into a competition with each other. And uh, they both uh, did a really great job. And my lab assistants, Luciana Reyna and Jose Villanueva also helped assist with our students applying all the decals. Uh, and they were, they were very excited. And most of the time, before we had the opportunity to do a car, we were kind of using our lockers and the, the different things that we had in the shop to apply decals. So this was the best opportunity we could have for the students to actually make an applicable, applicable uh, real world experience for them.
Bobby, how long did it take you from design to finish?
So from the design aspect, it probably takes one or two hours to get the design right. The printing part takes the longest. So you have to print everything, let everything dry so that we're able to laminate it and it's degassed, so that it doesn't shrink when it goes on the vehicle. So that takes about three to four hours. And then the application is about two hours.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you and thank them. And maybe you could bid on Copper's Cove and Cleveland.
And you know, in the future, um, we're looking to expand opportunities for our students, you know, in the wide format industry. And it's a very high demand industry. And with the, the one roll, Chief bought one roll of reflective material for like four hundred bucks. And we were able to get, we're able to get at least three cars out of that one roll.
So you did three cars?
We've done two cars. So we have enough left over for one more car.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob's waving you off, son. Okay, Thanksgiving. Let's go do the Thanksgiving meal. Ted.
So on November eighth, we had our Thanksgiving meal. Um, and it would, uh, was a really good uh, event and probably the largest Thanksgiving event that we've had uh, since, at least since I've been with the college. So just some fun facts. Uh, in two and a half hours, we fed one thousand one hundred twenty-five people. Um, six hundred and seventy-five of those folks were faculty and staff upstairs. Four hundred and fifty were our students downstairs. Our early college high school students, we learned, really enjoyed that meal. And so we, we made sure we're more organized this year and prepared to serve them. And so because of that preparation, we were able to serve um, a considerable amount of people. You may be thinking right now, how much does it take to feed those folks? So I'll share just a few fun facts here. So five hundred sixty pounds of turkeys, which we have to thank also Mr. Duggar because he was willing to smoke them for us. And so um, and then we also had to serve two hundred eighty-nine pounds of ham, seventy-eight pounds of beef tips. Sorry, Bob. Um, and then a hundred fifty pounds of scratch made cornbread. And I have more uh, poundage that I could share at another time. But uh, in essence, it takes a lot of preparation and time to, I don't think Gino sleeps for two days um, in getting everything ready for this meal and send you a good one. So a big thanks to our partner, Great Western Dining. The canned foods, all of that is donated to our pantry. Um, and in addition to that, actually, facilities also collected some cans um, over. So that's not everything. But everything does go to our food pantry. And so it was a, a great event all, all in all.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you to the college and the Chancellor, Dr. Carter and the administration for always supporting uh, the sponsorship of the event.
Many board members were there too, so.
Yes.
Thank you for, for that. And thank all the folks that made that possible.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll do it again next year, right?
Yes. You pay for it, we'll do it.
You know where he works, we're inside the house.
I think I may have the next one.
Who you got the next one?
Let's see.
Solar?
Yeah. Solar Eclipse event. And so Ms. Flores may want to speak, but if you'll recall, this was the opportunity and the event that we did to share our collaboration with the city for the upcoming twenty twenty-four Solar Eclipse. Um, it was a really good event. Um, the mayor spoke, the chancellor. Uh, we had some other key speakers from some of the different departments, from um, Parks and Recreation. Uh, Ms. Winston, our new director over the planetarium. Um, and then I think the, the person that stole the show was Mr. Hart, our resident astronomer. And so all in all, it was a, a really good event. And I, I do want to take an opportunity to just uh, plug Ms. Winston, um, a name that I think you'll become more and more familiar with. If you notice in many of the events that we've been doing, the essential theme has been the planetarium. We're really working hard to leverage that asset. Our partners are really working hard to work with us to leverage that. And so a big kudos to her since she's come on board, uh, that, which was around February. Um, they've really been making things happen to make it more of a central focus, so.
Are you going to have some more events leading up to the actual eclipse, which is a year away from now?
Yes, sir. So some of what we're talking with the, the city and um, for the record, we're still planning, so no one set this in stone, whoever, in case any of the reporting agencies are looking at this. We're in discussions to see what events we can do. We have some set events that we're going to mirror when we did with the last eclipse during that period in time. But leading up to it, we are having discussions about some things that we can do to keep the, the interest of the public. We're also meeting with um, Cove uh, and their libraries to discuss how we can also do something with them as well. So we're really looking at a collaborative effort that goes, you know, beyond just our borders here. Yes, sir.
There was great publicity about that event too. Um, on news, in newspaper and on television. I think I saw a reference to it. So that's great.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that completes the report, so.
Thank you, Joshua. Item five is the discussed, consider approval of the October twenty twenty-two interim financial statements investment report. Mr. Liberty.
I am so fortunate to follow all of those um, exciting presentations with uh, numbers, finances, isn't that? I know it's everyone's favorite. Um, but you should have a copy of the October interim financials, only two months of the year. Uh, very early. Uh, but if you look at the numbers, uh, very similar to what we discussed last month, the, the difference between last year through October and this year through October in the bottom line uh, is the increase that was awarded in the salaries as well as the incentive uh, that we paid for retention incentive to all current employees in September. So that's the difference between the two. Other than that, the years are mirroring the other, each other pretty closely. The one thing I will point out is if you look at the middle number, th- that middle column is the financial statements that we are in the process of finishing the audit on for last fiscal year. They're not final, but those numbers are probably pretty close. Uh, and you can see we had a bottom line positive of one point eight million dollars, um, which is uh, fairly remarkable with everything that went on. Uh, I do have to remind you that that did include about a little over a million dollars of uh, the last of the HERF lost revenue funds that I was able to draw down and get into this fiscal year. Um, but we do have a po- positive bottom line, which uh, I did not think at any time during the fiscal year, we were going to end up with a positive bottom line. So uh, that's pretty remarkable. But we're, we're pretty close to getting those numbers finished. The auditors have been uh, driving Doug and I crazy for the last several days. But um, we uh, we anticipate uh, having those to present to you at the December board meeting.
Good. Any questions, Mr. Liberty?
Thank you, Bob. It took a lot of hard work. He worked over the holidays, by the way, to get this public.
He always does.
Yeah.
That's what we expect of Mr. Liberty.
Yes, sir. I, I have grown to understand that. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion made second to approve the October twenty-two interim financial statement. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Liberty. And while you're still there, I want you to discuss and consider the approval of the Board Document or three three seven revised uh, number twenty-four policy statement, position paper, investment policy.
Yes, sir. I, I will remind you all, it's been a while um, since the workshop. But we discussed this in the workshop and, and this is something that written into the policy, we have a uh, responsibility and a requirement to discuss and make any changes of this every year. So we do it every year uh, in the November timeframe. There are no changes from the last policy to this policy, other than the dates. Um, because there have been made, no changes made to the Public Fund Investment Act. That's what basically guides this. We have an outline um, that we're required to follow. There are things that we can choose to add and not add, and we do some of that. But this is mostly uh, a requirement of the Public Funds Investment Act as to how we invest those dollars as they are all considered public funds, once, once they become property of the college. Uh, so if you don't have any questions, or if you have any questions, I should be able to answer them. But as I said, no changes from the previous fiscal year. There probably won't be any changes until the legislature meets the next time, if they make changes to that uh, policy.
Any questions, Mr. Liberty?
It's unfortunate that they didn't change anything. That is probably the most risk adverse document that I have ever read in my life. Um, which is no reflection on the staff. The staff has done a beautiful job with their hand, their hands tied behind their back, shackles on their feet and a hood over their head. It um, you, as they taught us all in finance, you do your very best to ladder your maturities so that you don't, are not at risk. Except when the ladder doesn't go anywhere. And so when you raise a ladder into the air that didn't go anywhere, what do you have? You got a set of monkey bars. And that's largely what we have been left with. I've, I know that they refer to the prudent man rule in there. And the last prudent man that I recall was my deceased father-in-law. Uh, who designed his portfolio during the best business education in the late thirties and early forties, before he graduated from college early and went off to the war to fly bombers over Italy and North Africa. Um, he did, he probably would have written a policy that looked very similar to that for what was going on in the world at that point. Uh, but that's when economics was still basically teaching, the world was flat. And we were in the business of allocating scarce resources and there was no room for growth because everything to know had already been discovered. So when I vote either no or abstain in a few minutes, yes, we have received the policy. Would I change the policy greatly? Or, you know, yes, I'm out talking to legislators to try to put together a group that will change the investment policy. Uh, how y'all do as well as you do with the limitations you're given. For those of you who have never missed, worked with Mr. Liberty, you have really missed a treat. I have greatly enjoyed my time on the board because I get to pick his brain twice a month during lunch.
Thank you, sir. You know, it, we are limited. We do the best we can. Um, I, I make an attempt to push the envelope as far as I can, but to make sure I follow the rules.
You do a beautiful job of following the law.
And, and, and thank you, sir. But we would, we would all, um, we would all benefit from the state lessening their grip as tight as they have it. Now, I can tell you, it's not like we would go out tomorrow and start investing public funds in emerging markets, um, you know, overseas. Uh, but, but there are some things we can do that would still provide us with full protection. And, and that's the main thing we need to do with public funds is to make sure that they're fully protected, so.
For those in the audience who, who don't realize that any of our students can walk into a local financial institution and get a better rate of return, investing a few hundred dollars as compared to Mr. Liberty investing millions. It's hard to find anybody who will even buy our CDs because they have to be a hundred percent reserved and they have to buy a bond guaranteeing that they will pay their interest.
Yes, sir.
How they get the, as good a job done as they can, it's, it's amazing to me. Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you, sir.
We're glad you're here. And you stay here on holidays.
I work from home. Thank goodness. Years ago, I'd have come out here during the holidays. It's a lot easier. We can do it from the house.
Any other questions, Mr. Liberty?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the revision number twenty-four of the document. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Item number seven is Discuss and Consider Approval of a Recommendation to Reject a Purchase Proposal for 0.918 acres of college property along Currit Road in the amount of $400,000. Mr. Harms?
Good afternoon. The college had received a proposal to purchase some property adjacent to the Hemingway Building. In your packet, I had given a little bit of background information and some, some additional information that I'm not going to go over. I'm just going to jump to the general recommendation that the administration recommends that the college not sell any property at this time. And then I wanted to go ahead, just to make sure there was no confusion, wanted to remind the board that any real property in the future that the college did want to sell, that we would need to make sure that we comply with all statutory requirements, and would include a formal solicitation process that we would need to follow. Typically, it includes public notice, identification of the solicitation process to be used, and then we'd also want to make sure that we got the fair market value for whatever property we did sell, so.
We approve the administration's recommendation and appreciation for the clarification of what our responsibility is.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of rejecting the offer say aye. Motion carries.
If he has to say no.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight is recommend any topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements by the board members. Start with Mr. Pierce.
Nothing, sir.
I think we need a review of all enrollments compared with previous years and see which way we're going.
We should also have some spring enrollment information here pretty soon, too, right? Should we get both of them?
Well, we have 44 days before that closes.
Final numbers on the fall.
Yeah, we got the final.
Final on the fall, but we also have some idea of what's, what's coming. That's good. Item number nine is announcement of time and location of board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December 13, 2022, at 1:00 p.m. in this location. There is no executive session today, and at this juncture, we'll go to item number 11, and we stand adjourned.